Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, June 13th, at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our invocation, followed by a moment of silence.
Let's pray. Well, God our Father, we thank you for tonight, for the opportunity to meet together and to plan things for this community. Father, we pray your blessings upon the Donald Span family and for the loss that has been felt. We pray for ourselves as a community, Lord, for your comfort and guidance through all of this. Now, Lord, even tonight, we pray for the men and women who lead this community tonight. Father, that you give them wisdom and guidance and direct their thinking and the unity with which we work and move forward. Thank you, Lord, for your guidance, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, and we're asking everyone tonight to please remember our fallen councilman, Don Span, who we buried today at Cayman Park Cemetery. You see the bunting here and the last chair on the dais, that was Don Spot, and we're certainly going to miss him. Mr. Hardaway, would you lead us in the pledge tonight, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is a roll call. Kelly, roll call, please.
Sure. Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck. Councilwoman Uselak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Six present.
I think it's five.
Five present, I'm sorry, you're right.
Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, remonstrations, we have a Kiwanis presentation tonight. I'll invite you to the podium, guys, and Chief Dusas. And we have our K-9 tonight with us, and I'll let the chief introduce everyone. And Costa, there's a microphone here for you.
All right, thank you, everybody. I'm going to take a moment to introduce everybody here. This is Brian Messarch. He's with the Kiwanis Club, and everybody knows him here. This is Sergeant Schmidt, his partner Goose, this pastor and...
Brian Messarch.
Brian Messarch. Brian reached out to us, he knew our dilemma with money, when it comes to money, and the K-9 program is something that we need in the community, and it's always been a passion of mine to have the K-9 program. Unfortunately, sometimes we fall short with money. So it's groups like you all that help us and make it possible for us to have K-9, so thank you very much.
I'd like to take the opportunity to say that the Crossroads Kiwanis Club, we used to be the Maryville Breakfast Kiwanis Club, but we expanded to include Crown Point and Cedar Lake. We had a waffle breakfast to support the K-9 units of Maryville and Crown Point. At the beginning of this year, we wanted to do things to support things in our local community. Kiwanis has often helped children throughout the world get iodine. We often help children at Riley's Children's Hospital in Indianapolis, but sometimes it's hard for the community to see what we're doing here with our residents, and we wanted to get involved with something like our K-9 unit. We are talking with Terrence at the Park Department, developing some programs to help support youth. So our efforts here are to help develop community relations and bring the community together. I strongly urge everyone to join a service club like the Kiwanis Club or possibly the Lions Club, to come out and build community, meet your neighbors, and do good things. So in support of the K-9 unit and the Maryville Police Department, they do awesome things for us, and we love them, so we should give them a lot of credit, and we have written a check for them for $700.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. I have to agree with Brian that as service clubs like theirs that get involved in the community that could really make a difference, and it all adds up, so thank you very much, guys, appreciate your involvement and the support of the K-9 program.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is the...did Vernon Smith make it to the meeting? I don't see him. Saw him today, okay. Moving on then to the May Employee of the Month, I'll call on Fire Chief Yurga, who's out of town, right? Who's taking care of it? Come on up, sir, and use the podium, please.
Good evening. Apologies for Chief Yurga, he is out of town this evening along with Deputy Chief Lilly. They got some important and things that they have to take care of. My name is Captain Westbury, and I'd like to introduce firefighter Coin, who has been given the Employee of the Month for May. Firefighter Coin has more than 20 years on the Maryville Fire Department, 10 of those years just as a volunteer, answering calls on his time off from his full-time job. 10 years ago, actually next month, is when we hired Jason full-time. Since then, he's become one of our divers. You guys may have recognized him from multiple TV news appearances, rescuing an owl just a few months back. Jason also takes care of pretty much 90% of all of our IT stuff. Fire Department has gotten away from all pens and papers, now everything is all computerized. So we want to thank Jason very much for jumping us up into the 21st century.
That's great.
Thank you.
Council President, gentlemen, hold on, please. We have a certificate I'd like to read, and a small token of the town's appreciation. The certificate of recognition reads, I'm going to come over to the podium where I can get on camera, and it's a lot easier to read. Certificate of Recognition, Employee of the Month, May 2023. This certificate is proudly presented to Jason Coin for your initiative as a firefighter, EMT, and dive team member, considered to be a jack-of-all-trades performing preventative maintenance on equipment and tools and taking care of the fire department, awarded this 13th day of June 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations, Jason. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable, register voucher approval for June 13th, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes from May 23rd.
Still moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. White, for approval of the consent agenda as submitted. Questions or comments? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committees, we have Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that we have on tap is when tomorrow night, we will have a evening of town tax talk with Michael Griffin from Highland. Michael is well-respected in the financial world, and it will be tomorrow night, starting at 6:30 PM, at the Mike Anderson Event Center. Everyone is welcome to get a full understanding of property taxes, TIF, and any other questions that you may have. We'll have a panel, so that you can ask any question that you need to, pertaining to taxes, and Mr. Griffin and the panel will be able to answer all of those questions, and if they can't give you an answer tomorrow night, they will get back to you with a written response. That's all I have.
And there's going to be cookies, I hear, so that'll be good. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Street Department, any report, Pat or Steve?
I believe Pat has the letter to read. Pat, do you have the letter?
I do, but first we have the signage proposal funding approval, and ma'am, if you would permit, Mr. King, he'll present that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. So as part of our... As part of our initiative to revitalize our department, we are also now called the Maryville Street Department. We would like to have a digital sign erected out in front of our building, 13 West 73rd Avenue, the building kind of sits back a little bit, a lot of people don't know we're there. It'll have a four-by-eight digital display, if Sheila allows me to have that, four-by-eight digital display, which we will post town events, events that we have as far as our branch pickup, leaf pickup, things like that. So tonight, I'm asking for approval from the council to go ahead and move forward with the signage. Also, we're going to get, we're going to replace the old awnings on the building, three existing awnings, and I believe two, two new awnings. That's all in your packet here tonight, along with the electrical work that's involved, so I'm just asking for a vote to approve this, so we can get moving on this.
Still moved, Mr. President?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Uselak, for approval of the new signage and awnings at the Street Department. I believe we had discussed perhaps paying half of these costs from the Broadway TIF fund, and the other half from the ARP fund, just to split these up a bit. Would that be okay with your motion, Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak, your second stand?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway, you okay with the ARP? I guess we'll find out when you vote.
We have an ARP meeting tomorrow night, 4:30. Bring your information.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White?
Cost, Facker.
Yeah, it's honored. Do you have a total, Steve, for us?
Uh, I believe it's right around $62,000. That's for...
How much?
Uh, $62,000, that's for the awnings, the sign, and the electrical work.
So that's the rebranding of the department?
Yes, for the rebranding of the department, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Mrs. Uselak, do you have the letter, a proposal to provide services to complete the Next Level Trails application?
Yes, yeah, just to read the letter.
Mr. President, I have that. This letter comes to us from Butler, Fairman, and Seifert. It has to do with the Next Level Trails Grant Application Round Four, which is the extension of the Erie Lacawanna Trail West Leg, if you will, along 91st Avenue, and there's a myriad of activities associated with this proposal, beginning with, "Complete the application", followed by, "Coordinate with the town of Sherrville and City of Crown Point, possible connection to the Pennsy Trail at Clark Road, prepare a detailed cost breakdown, including updating any previous construction engineering, develop the application narrative, including, but not limited to, detailed project description, address impacts on environmental, historical, ecological, and architectural resources, and document environmental permits, prepare and submit information to the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, coordinate, enhance existing type, take photos of proposed routes, monitor and relay that information of construction, document estimated value of right-of-way needed for trail corridor." The total price for the proposal is a lump sum not to exceed $4,500, and we have the dollars. Mr. King has these monies in his budget, and I should say, Park Director Price mentioned they have dollars, but we are recommending to use the Street Department money.
Thank you, Pat. Mrs. Uselak, do you have a comment or a motion?
No, I think Pat has said it all, and I think the amount of money is correct at this time.
Do you have a motion for approval?
Yes, I will make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of this engineering work. So what we're going to do is offer some trails to allow Bridgewood Subdivision, Marion Woods, and Teal Crossings to access the bike trails without having to drive there, is that correct? And then we're eventually going to tie in with a trail that Sherrville's going to use to also access to get more people using the walking trails, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And after we get this work done, NERC is going to pay for the actual trail, right?
Yeah, they'll provide funding through the...well, this is a, this is a DNR grant. Is this, this is a DNR grant like we had for our, for our Round Three Grant Application.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, we use Butler Fairman for this one, too, and they were able to secure, you know, $1.4 million for that project for us, so.
So we're optimistic?
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Moving on tonight to Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, we need to, I need to call another committee meeting. We met a couple weeks back about entry signs, the bridges, so with Bob Sannie, who I see in the audience from Robinson, and Steve, I need to reconvene that committee, and I'll find a time where we can get caught up, guys, okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to talk about today, Mr. President, the elephant in the room here. Obviously, the big issue we have with the Hickory Ridge apartments is not going away, and I would like to bring some of that under the environmental affairs, specifically because of the air quality that's in those apartments. I don't, I don't know what they are. I know you're getting a lot of information, maybe Joe's getting information, but I would like to talk to these people and find out what's going on, because right now, they don't know. And, you know, when I see people in tears, it bothers me, even to the extent, I'm sure anybody that got any kind of feelings with them. My experience that day, Mr. President, was the fact that I didn't even know that kind of stuff was happening here in Maryville. And when I went in that building, my respiratory tract immediately seized up, and I just went in the door and came back out. So I would like the environmental affairs to kind of look into that a lot more closer, just for the public's, public health portion of it, and then maybe we can shift some things, sir, to abandoned, abandoned properties. I don't know if that'd fit up under that, but gotta do something, because from what I hear, mostly what I've heard today, was that there were some stickers put on that building. I talked to the chief, and I think Chief Costas, and he was saying that he didn't think that was appropriate at this time in our career.
No, it was Lake County was actually the ones that put them on.
Right, right.
What they had put on, yeah. And then what happened was they ran out of stickers, and we put some on, but we removed them, because they weren't.
Okay. So I'm just suggesting that, you know, we found a way to meet with these people, at least so they all know something, because when you, if you asked me to move today or three weeks from now, mm, I would be outside, because I don't have anywhere to go. So I would like, in the very near future, to call a meeting, maybe a committee meeting for, because, you know, environmental affairs normally doesn't do that, but I just think that's really important for the health and safety of the people.
Leonard, I had a couple calls from people that lived in the building.
Yes.
And I had forwarded them to the Township Trustee.
Okay.
Who is supposed to help in a situation like this. And I also gave Mr. Hardaway's name, because he is affiliated with the Salvation Army. So I don't know if you got the call, or the calls that I gave him your number?
I received calls and also contacted Salvation Army.
Good, because I did tell two or three of them that you were affiliated with the Salvation Army, and then I also explained about the Township Trustee, which, these people are in dire help at this moment, so I'm sure the trustee will help them, too.
Yes.
So that's where I'm at with it.
Okay. Hopefully, we can get some kind of commitment from the trustee. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to him, you know, our day's been busy today, but tomorrow was going to be a hit-the-ground-running day for me, just to turn back and look at what has already happened.
Yeah.
I know from time to time, we say that this is not our ward, you know, but...
Right.
I think now we all need to be on board with this one here.
Sure.
Because it's, it's a big thing.
Yes.
And now that I got a chance of, actually, that was my first time ever going into Hickory Ridge when that happened, and as I got closer, I seen a lot of things, and I appreciate the town addressing the immediate public health issue, and I was getting that garbage up, that garbage was reeking and leaking everywhere. So I will send you an email, Mr. President, and hopefully, we can get something together real soon. I don't know where our meeting place would be, but I'll check back with Terrence and see if he, if there's any availability to have a meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
We can share that there are some new owners looking at the property, and they've committed to spend millions of dollars, right, Chief?
Correct.
Into rehabbing Hickory Ridge.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, it's not happening fast enough.
Sure.
So residents have an immediate need now.
Yes.
That we have to talk about.
Absolutely.
Um, we did call the Health Department today. The stickers that are on the doors are going to be changed tomorrow. They're going to be a little more clarified, not just get out in 10 days as they read now. And we complained about the verbiage on the stickers. We also talked to Attorney Fettenoff today to see what we can do, and I think Joe's going to contact a Lake County attorney also, right, Joe?
Correct, tomorrow. Additionally, those, the verbiage on those stickers right now is kind of incorrect. It's putting the onus on the resident instead of putting the onus on the property owner. We're putting all the focus on the property owner, and that's what we want, is we want a responsible property owner. Hopefully, the new one who comes in is a lot more responsible than the prior ones. So that's what, we're also going to be sitting down, I think, with the new property owners as soon as possible.
Okay.
To discuss their plan of attack, on making sure garbage is picked up, addressing remediation problems, addressing structural issues if there are any, and so on, so.
Yeah, I'd like to give them a timeframe, because I think, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, they had to come to this point where it's just so public now, you know. These guys, I don't know them, never seen the face, never seen management face, but I want to, and hopefully, we can get together with the communities real soon.
Well, as we've done in the past with other irresponsible owners, we call them to the table.
Yes.
And then we demand...
Okay.
That in Maryville, they be a responsible owner.
Yes, because I think some people don't understand the difference between us being a town and the limitations we have from being a town. If it was a city, we would have probably a health department where we could actually do some different things, so I'd like to get on some type of meeting real soon, if you could, sir. Thank you.
Well, Leonard, that along with the fact that state law only allows us to do so much was a real eye-opener, too.
Yes.
And, you know, writing tickets to an owner that's never going to pay...
Right.
Never going to correct the problems, doesn't really do any good. You have a writing tickets, but that doesn't fix anything. So you're right, the problem is bigger.
Absolutely, so by the owners not being responsive, they already lost credibility with me.
Well, I don't...
Well, I'd say, I'd say this, I'd say the old ownership group that owned this, where all these problems have surfaced now...
Yes.
Is definitely, probably should be written off. I think we should give the new owners at least a chance to come in and fix all the issues and remediation problems.
Absolutely, and I agree, and the new owners, I think, should reach out to their tenants and let them know what's happening, because then that's something that we don't have to do, but if they're not going to do something, we have to find a way to address it. Thank you.
Moving on tonight to Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get my report, Dr. Smith emailed me and said that he left all his material at home. He was on his way home to get it, and will be back.
That's fine.
So, okay, and back in April, Councilman Bella, myself, and HR Director Kathy Pettit met with Dr. Danny Lackey to discuss several ideas on how we can continue our effort with diversity, equality, and inclusion. Dr. Lackey is now offering consulting work, because he retired from the school system, and he is available to work with the town on a contractual basis to assist us in keeping our efforts going on this important topic. And he gave us a proposal, which hopefully, everyone has it in their packets, and he's going to provide consultation and training. He will establish a diversity, equality, equity, and inclusion committee with town employees representing various departments. Once the committees have been established, we have orientation and training session with committee members focusing on DEI education and the town's diversity and equality statement. Also, he will, the services that he will provide is consultation, he'll prepare four hours, and four hours of training, and four hours of newly selected committee members. And he will also provide facilitation. He will meet with nine department heads to gather the information on workplace, climate, and culture, and he will also create and implement climate and culture surveys to collect data that will be used to help determine, support, and monitor DEI goals and objectives. So Dr. Lackey's in the audience, so if we have any questions, you can approach him after the meeting, and he should be able to answer any question that you may have.
Let's just have Dr. Lackey approach the podium now.
So that we can see who you are. You have anything you want to say?
I just want to say that while I was in Maryville, and we did provide those services, it was really wonderful getting to know more about Maryville, how the town works, and to get to know the employees in that regard, and I know that when I was involved with that, that was the first step, and beginning to do more in that space in the town, and I know that me being here today and being a part of requesting to be your consultant is another step in that direction, so I appreciate possibly having the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Did you have a motion for approval?
I make a motion that we accept Dr. Lackey's proposal of not to exceed $7,500 at this point.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway, and a second by Mrs. Uselak, to approve the proposal by Dr. Lackey to continue our efforts in diversity, equality, and inclusion. Questions or comments on the motion?
Yeah, one thing I'd like to have, Mr. President, that we empower you to be able to sign the agreement.
Your second stand, Mrs. Uselak?
Yes.
Very good. Any other discussion on the topic? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you. That's all, that completes my report.
Is there anything for public safety, Mrs. Uselak?
Um, well, Mr. Minchuck is calling a meeting for Tuesday, June 27th, at 5:00 PM, an executive session, and that will be held right here in the town hall. And that's all I have to report for Mr. Minchuck.
Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
No report at this time.
Parks and Recreations, Mrs. Uselak.
Oh, yes, the parks have been mowed again, and I have to thank you, Terrence. They were mowed in excellent condition this time, and they have, the other parks have been rehabbed, Rosenbaum, Cruzen, and Forest Hills, with the roof on all the gazebos, and those are in excellent condition now. And the bike trail is up to par. I haven't had any calls on it this month, anyway, but the last time I looked, everything was in great shape. So I think the parks and everything involved is looking really good. Thank you.
Mrs. Uselak, I believe the council has photographs of the before and after of the park improvements that were done. Terrence, anything to add to the work that was done and how timely it was? I was amazed by how quickly they got everything completed.
Thank you. We're just grateful that we took care of this. Parks are very, very important for the community, and we're happy for the residents of Maryville to be able to enjoy them.
This new bridge in Forest Hills looks very inviting.
Yes. And we do have pictures, as our president stated. If anyone in the audience would like to look at the pictures after the meeting, I've got them right here.
Better yet, go to the parks and enjoy them and see it in person.
Yes. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President. I, I, I agree with Councilman White as to the, uh, travesty at Hickory Ridge, and, uh, I think code enforcement and everybody else has played an integral part in trying to rectify this.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I just think that whatever we can do, we should do to help, uh, eliminate some of the pain that these residents are currently, uh, having. That's all I have.
Question real quick for Pat. What happened to our landscaping company that the town hired to go in and clean up the property? Is it weather-related? I've heard from residents tonight that they have not shown up yet.
It's still, needs some grants.
Do you have any idea? I think it was RL
I, I, I will contact them tomorrow, wasn't aware of that.
Okay. I know Chief Costa was involved in organizing that, too.
Right.
So, okay. Chief, I was just asking about the landscaping company that we hired to go in and clean up the property at Hickory Ridge. Do you have an update for us on that?
Sir, yes, sir. The, uh, we didn't actually hire a landscaping company. The owner is allegedly paid up on their landscaping, and they're supposed to be start cleaning up. That was the communication that I received with these new potential owners.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, I do have, uh, one thing I want to bring up under Rich's committee, because I see Mr. Berger in the audience. Hi, Joe. Um, we all received, uh, about 11 items that I'm going to pass on to Vicki, the most pressing of which, and Sheila, I know you've reached out to him, uh, 6935. Joe and I talked about this before. It went through the blight hearing on several occasions, Rich. The guy never showed. I went to one of the hearings. He wasn't there. I'm going to, I, with all due respect, I'm going to take this out of the blight, and Joe and Sheila and I are going to solve this once and for all. And we're going to call the new owner, and we're going to get this done once and for all. Joe's had to look at this thing for a year and a half, and that's unacceptable. So, we've got our list. I'm going to get it to Vicki, and then you and Sheila and I are going to find a time to get with this new owner and solve this once and for all, okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Pettit, you still have the floor for your Dean and Barbara White Community Center report.
Um, at this time, I have nothing unless Terrence has anything in particular. We haven't had to have a, a committee meeting, um, with Jeff being out of town on vacation. Uh, I need to get with him and Leonard and figure out a time when we can get back together, uh, on some issues. Do you have anything, Terrence?
Not right now. I'll put it all together in the later department.
Okay.
Thank you. Special Projects, Mr. Hardaway, you have a long list here.
Yeah, I have a lot of stuff to talk about here. First thing is, Thursday night, uh, Councilman Bella and myself attended the Legacy Foundation's, uh, scholarship awards dinner, which was a great time for, for all of the high school seniors that were graduating, and especially the four high school seniors that, uh, we recognized. We recognized three from Maryville, one from, uh, Andrian. And, uh, those were, uh, one-year scholarships at $1,000 each. Um, and the Legacy Foundation, through their 2023 scholarship review, reviewers based on strict criteria, no one from the town government was involved in the selection process. I think that that's most important to everybody, that we don't interfere in the process as the, and let the Legacy, uh, Foundation do exactly what they do. And that leaves us a total of $20,000 in the, uh, coffers for, uh, the upcoming years that, uh, after $4,000, after the $4,000 was given out to, uh, to pay these four students. So, uh, I'll turn it over to Councilman Bella, and he can read to you, uh, each one of the recipients from the town.
Thank you, Richard. Um, so, Janaya Milton is a graduate of Maryville High School. She'll be attending Ball State University, and she received $1,000 from the, uh, Maryville Inclusion Scholarship Fund. Um, Caleb Lucy, Lacy, I'm sorry, graduated Maryville High School, also plans to attend IUPUI and received $1,000. Victoria Piskel, the graduate from Andrian High School, is going to attend St. Mary's and received $1,000 scholarship. Um, she's the only applicant from Andrian, and the reason that is, we should explain, is that Maryville is such a larger student population, it was done by ratios. So, there's three students from Maryville, one from Andrian, because there's so many students at Maryville. And then, uh, Christian Sabbath is a graduate of Maryville High School, received $1,000 scholarship. And the way this works is the Legacy Foundation actually pays the college directly in the fall, uh, right before the classes start. And we got to sit with three of them, and, uh, it was quite rewarding to hear and see our youth moving on with their lives, and it was kind of a shot in the arm, uh, to hear their talks and, uh, discussion about what they want to do with their lives and moving forward. So, thank you, Mr. Hardaway.
And one of the things that we did was we encouraged them, once they graduate, to please come back to Maryville.
Yeah.
We'd love to have them. Um, moving right along, Mr. President, uh, tomorrow night, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have the, the town tax talk, starting at 6:30. And again, I encourage all residents to come out, uh, for that informational, uh, period. Saturday, June 17th, we will have our Juneteenth, um, event, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Shine, so she can, uh, promote it a little bit more.
So, we'd like to, um, invite everyone out to our Juneteenth Freedom Festival Celebration on Saturday, June 17th, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The committee has worked very hard. Robin Johnson from the, uh, Clerk Treasurer's Office and myself, we sort of, uh, co-chaired the, um, drive to get the festival ready, and we will have food trucks, um, the Corvette cars, we will have a kitty, our kitty area, where there'll be face paintings, there'll be choirs, bands, and we, this year, we have 40 vendors. So, I invite everyone to come out, and I like to, uh, I don't, the list, I do not have with me of our sponsors who supported us this year. I'd like to, uh, thank them. That's it. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mrs. Shine. And also, I'd like to congratulate your committee. You guys did an excellent job. Uh, I think one of the things that Councilman Bella and myself, uh, thought about is that let us get out of the way and let you guys do it, and if you need us, we'll come. But if you don't need us, then we'll stay out of the way and let you guys do what you do. And you guys did an excellent job of, uh, organizing this thing, and we're looking for a great time on Saturday, and I definitely encourage all council members to please show up, uh, and spend some time out there and mingling with the people. It's going to be a great time. Uh, fireworks is July the 3rd, at, starting at 9 o'clock, and it will be at the high school in, in the parking lot. And one of the parking lots, which one is it that's, uh, shut off? Is it A or something?
Mm-hmm.
I think parking lot A is under constru, because there's construction going on at the high school, so we won't be able to use that one. So, we encourage everyone to come early and secure your spot, and at 9 o'clock, we'll start. And this year, we have radio station V107.3 that will synchronize the music to coincide with the, uh, fireworks. So, that's something that we didn't do last year, but we're thinking that that's going to be a great time for us this year. Um, Independence Day Parade, July the 4th, starting at 11:00 AM. Uh, one of the things that we're going to do there also is we will have speakers, uh, on Broadway. I think there's going to be like three spots. Councilman Bella, I spoke to, uh, Adam today, and he's work, working up a proposal now to have speakers on Broadway, so you'll be able to hear the announce, the announcements as Brian Daring announces the, uh, participants. Everyone would know exactly who they are. And then on July 27th, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM, at the, uh, Mike Anderson Events Center, we will have our Third Annual Job Fair. We encourage people that are looking for employment to come out on that day, and, uh, we're looking for a lot of vendors. I don't know how many we, do we know how many we got so far, Pat?
We have verbal commits from at least 15. Um, if we repeat our first and second year, we'll be turning vendors away, topping out at 60. We expect to have that same success.
Thank you.
Pat, do you recall how many, uh, jobs were actually offered on that particular day? I know that companies like Albany's were hiring on the spot, you know?
Right. Well, the first year, it was a surprise, uh, if I remember. I, uh, Albany's kind of pirated one of our rooms, and it's okay, because they, they, they reported having hired, sourced from that single event, almost 20 people, maybe more.
Mm-hmm.
The second year, um, I, I want to say, in total, including Albany's, FedEx, it was closer to 50, uh, originally from that date.
That's great.
So, one of the things we're, we're doing is going back through as we re-invite, invite vendors, is to ask them their success.
Hmm, sure.
And, and, you know, it, provide that information to the council.
And it goes without saying, Mr. President, and Pat, I'd remind you and Angie and Kathy, those that have received tax incentives from this town council, this town, we need to remind them of that 10% goal that we ask for of hiring Maryville residents when we give up those incentives.
Right, right.
That concludes my report.
Uh, Councilmen, all respectfully, those are some of the first companies we talked to, and we even have a couple call us in advance, so.
That's good.
Thank you, though.
So, Kelly just pointed out that last year, we talked, or last meeting, we talked about the parade starting at 11:30. That was an error. It actually starts at 11 o'clock this year, from the community center at 66th and Broadway, traveling south, finishing at 80th Place. So, it's 11 o'clock for the parade, right, Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will be able to use the parking lot at PNC Bank.
Oh, good. That's convenient.
That building, I've already got permission that they can disembark there.
Okay.
Or park there if they need to have a staging place.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to Department and Commission reports. Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mr. White.
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, known as NERCy, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the conference earlier last week, uh, NARCA, and some great information came out of that. We talked about, they talked about trails, uh, they talked about electric vehicles, and they also talked about affordable, affordable housing. And all of those things, uh, the two of them anyway, trails and affordable housing, are things that are near and dear to us here in town of Maryville, and so, there will be more information forthcoming as to what we can do to, uh, realize some of the federal money that's out there that can help us, especially with the affordable housing aspect. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway. And I did see, uh, Dr. Smith come in. Dr. Vernon Smith. So, if, uh, it's okay, I'll divert back to your report tonight. Thank you for coming with a legislative update. Please take the podium there, and we can help with any kind of passouts. Mr. Riordan?
Yep.
And if you'd like to walk around and talk, I have a wireless mic, if you'd like. Okay.
As I begin, let me thank you for the, the privilege and the honor of serving the town of Maryville. I am humbled and I'm honored to be your state representative, and hopefully, I'm doing the kind of job that you would appreciate. Annually, I come here to make this report because I do believe in the representative form of government, that you elected me not to be your master, but for me to be your servant, not a slave, but to be your servant, to serve you. And in order for me to serve you, I must hear from you, I must know what your desires are, and then I must report back to you. And I'm in the phase now of reporting back to you. Before I began, I would like to just pay tribute to one of your council persons that made the transition. I saw many of you at the services today, but Don Span was a friend, and he will be missed. And when I think of him, I often think of what Bobby Kennedy said, when he said, "Every individual can make a difference," and that every individual has an obligation and responsibility to make a difference. And Don Span was a person who not only tried to make a difference, but he did make a difference. I know he made a difference in my life, and so, I want to pay tribute to him in a place where he held so dear to his heart, this, uh, Town Hall, and he was so pleased to be a representative of the people. I come today to just give highlights and any of the constituents who are out in the lobby. If you want a copy, you can feel free to come and get and follow along with us. There's more copies there. If I were to share with you all the things that we did between January, uh, 4th and 5th, when it was started till April 27th, uh, we would be here all night. And so, I know that you don't want to do that, and being intelligent people, I know that you can do some reading and research on your own. But as I make this report, I'm just going to highlight some of the bills, and, uh, if you have questions at the end, I'll take those questions. And in addition, if you study this and read over some time in the future, and you have questions, I ask that you give me a call, and I'll do my best to try to answer your questions. Can I direct your attention first to page, uh, four of this document? Page four is a document, is a bill, on, on page four is a bill, House Bill 1002, and you know that we have up to 1,000 bills that we hear annually. And this one is dealing with education and workforce development. There was a time in the state of Indiana that we were trying to push everybody towards college education. Now, the pendulum's swinging the other way, and it seemed like we're trying to push everybody towards career development and workforce development. And so, this is a bill to add more funding for, uh, the education and workforce development. On page five is a bill, House Bill 1004, and the state, uh, with this great surplus that we have, that many times they don't want to spend, and there's a lot of human need out there, but the bottom line, this one here is an effort to spend more money on healthcare, because certainly, regardless of how much education you have and how much wealth you have, if you don't have your health, you don't have anything. I direct your attention to page 10. On page 10 is House Bill 1034, and this one might be of interest to those persons who are in the reserves or in the National Guard. Uh, what this bill does is that will exempt those persons who are in those two, uh, forces from paying income tax on the money that they receive. On page 17, House Bill 1138, was sponsored by a person from Lake County, Representative Jackson, and requires that all water in our schools be tested for lead, because we've had incidents where, uh, we have high lead content in our water. On page 20, a bill that I was diabolically opposed to, uh, is House Bill 1177, that deals with firearms in schools, that teachers can, can carry a gun, they can carry any kind of gun, there's no regulation on a gun. And in addition to that, all the teachers and all the teacher groups that testified before us indicated that teachers don't want that responsibility. However, the bill did pass because it's an NRA bill. House Bill 1334, uh, is a bill that we are looking at. It deals with absentee voting.
What page?
I'm sorry, page 31. Even though the research shows that there has been none to little cases of voter fraud, uh, the party that's in control of the House and the Senate continues to push legislation to, uh, to tighten the reins on our ability to vote. Most states are moving towards, uh, allowing more people to vote, and we're trying to minimize the number of people vote. What this bill says is, in order to, to vote by absentee ballot, you now must, as you send your form back in, we used to just have to send a form in and make the request, now you've got to have copies of your driver's you've got to have copies of your driver's license included, your identification numbers from, uh, the, your, uh, for non-driver, non-drivers, your identification number, and other proof to prove who you are. If you turn to page forty-three, forty-three is a bill, um, is House Bill Fourteen Forty-Nine. It's a bill that I'm very concerned about and have high interest, I had and still do have high interest in, because when I first got into the legislature in nineteen ninety, uh, I was a co-author for the Twenty-First Century Scholars Program. That's a program that is providing educational opportunities for young people in the community who have financial problems. One of the things that was occurring was that in the middle schools, you had to apply for these scholarships, and you had to stay drug-free and trouble-free for your four years in high school. But many of the young people were not filling out the applications, and, and the parents weren't submitting the information that was necessary. And as a consequence, when they got ready to graduate and they were thinking about going to college, they were ineligible, even though they could have been eligible. This bill now says that you don't have to file for this. If you qualify and you're of the age to go to college, then you can get the Twenty-First Century Scholars. I was a co-author of that bill, author, co-author of the initial bill, and co-author of this revision. If you turn to page forty-four, it deals with House Bill Fourteen Fifty-Four, and I know Mr. Hardeman knows about this bill because Mr. Hardeman and I were in constant, uh, communication about this bill. This is a bill that Julia Ortoff had been working on, Eddie Melton had been working on, and yours truly Vernon Smith had been working on now, what, four or five years to get the food and beverage test?
Five years.
Five years. And, uh, I guess the fifth year was a charm because we, we, you now have that, and the majority of the credit should go, I would like to say it should go to me, even though I worked in the background, but it goes to Senator Melton, who was able to get that put in a bill, and we just had to protect it on our side. Page fifty, House Bill Fourteen Eighty-Three. That's a bill that I authored and got passed, and when you're in the minority party, if you get a bill passed, you have to pat yourself on the back because you've gone through hell to get it through the process. And this bill deals with bullying in schools, among schoolchildren. And some of you may not know, but research bears the fact that there are two reasons why young people are taking their lives, and, and, and suicides are, are on the rise among young people. And it comes because of sexual orientation and bullying, bullying being a number one factor. And we're losing too many young people to bullying. They can't deal with it, the stress and the pain that's caused by it. And the bullying has taken on a, a different level of impact on our young people because they got cyberbullying now. Many of the young people will go to teachers and officials in a school and share that they're being bullied, but the research shows from those who have committed suicides and talking to family members and people who have attempted or people who have gone through the process, young people indicate that many times the teachers and the educational leaders do not respond. What this bill says is if you get a complaint, you must investigate it, and if you find that is warranted, then you must deal with the issue, you must keep a record. We also found that many of the schools were not keeping records of bullying, so now they're required to keep a record. If the, uh, person who is being offended, uh, wants to transfer to a school, uh, they're given that option with this bill so they can get away from the pain. Dealing with the perpetrator, if the perpetrator, it is documented that this person is a constant bully, then that person can be sent to another school. I, I mentioned today at Councilman Spann's funeral that, uh, that about my situation being the last of ten children, I thank God for, for seven older, six older brothers because I never was bullied because they said, "He's a Smith. Leave him alone. He got these crazy old brothers." Senate Bill Three Twenty-Seven is on page eighty-eight. And I know this is not probably of interest to you, but many of the residents of Gary, many of the residents of Maryville were former Gary residents, and I know we keep up with each other's news. Uh, this bill gives back the authority for local control of the Gary schools, which will be effective July first, twenty twenty-four. On page eighty-nine, deals with teacher hiring, and there's a bill, S, SV Three Forty-Two. It simply says that there must be expanded criminal background checks on all teachers. On page ninety-nine, uh, this is a bill that establishes, uh, Senate Bill Three Four Thirty-Four is a bill that establishes the potential for us to have a Lake County, uh, convention center. It provides for a lot of money, you know, for projects in Gary, but the convention center can be anywhere in the county. I could go on, I have so many reports, but I'm not going to do that. Let me just simply say that, uh, I am so honored again to have served you for the time that I've been here. I've served Maryville now for, for twelve years, and I certainly appreciate your faith and your confidence in me. And as I close, uh, I've been getting a lot of phone calls from people with the, in the Hickory Ridge Lake apartments, concerned about the health conditions there. I don't know exactly whose district that is in, but I certainly would like to talk with you if you would be willing to do so, so, uh, so that we can try to bring some relief to those persons who are ill-equipped by the situation. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Dr. Smith, is this report available, uh, online somewhere? I noticed some residents didn't receive a copy. Can they download it or look at?
It, it is, and if you would like me to mail you a copy, hire a copy, if you're just going to scratch a piece of paper, uh, give me your name and address. I'll make sure that happens, but it is online. Those of you, I do represent all, almost all of Maryville. If you can find me by going to the Indiana House of Representatives and putting your address in, it will give you, me as your state rep, and just send me an email, and I'll, I'll send you a copy that way. Or you can just call me on the phone. My phone number is listed in the book. I can't serve you unless you can get to me. So, give me a call, and one of those ways, I'll get it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Well, thank you for this opportunity.
Back to the agenda, Stormwater Management Resources Director Matt Lake.
Yeah, real quick, Gulf Construction's going to remobilize, get back on the Kaiser Ditch Lateral Project. There was some utility conflicts, enough of them have been resolved for them to continue onward. Reichelt is started at Hundred First and Clay. They started with the tree removal and clearing, and also some ditch clearing and re-grading, and then they'll put the culverts in, and that should alleviate any overtopping in Clay Street. I think Steve's going to come in after the fact and do the paving this year, so that'll take care of that entire area. Ninety-seventh and Grand, uh, we're trying to satisfy a Corps of Engineers permit. Uh, they want us to redesign the profiles of two-stage ditch deals. See if we'll do that pretty quickly, and then we'll resubmit and then satisfy that permit, and then we just have to do the, um, land acquisition portion of that project before we can get it shovel-ready. With regards to our CRS status, uh, we are officially Class Seven again, uh, which is the best ranking in the state of Indiana. Uh, this lowers flood insurance for high-risk categories by ten percent automatically. And I also have received word in IDM that, uh, we have received Bronze status for the Clean Community Program. Uh, we are part of a pilot program of only handful of communities participated in to rekindle this program for the state, and so, uh, there'll be announcement, um, probably within the next month or two. That's all I have.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Uh, yes, this question is for Matt. Matt, can you give a, a brief update on the pumping station situation over Hickory Ridge?
Yeah, Christopher Burke, um, as part of the project that we are proposing, uh, will re, re, they redesigned the whole, uh, pumping station. Um, so that includes detention, pump station, all the conveyances to and from that leads to, uh, lateral six, Turkey Creek. So, uh, we presented to the Little Calumet River Basin Commission, um, they're going to make, take a vote on whether to fund almost a million dollars' worth of the project. I submitted a two-nineteen, um, request for the other half of the project, and so, um, so once that gets funded, then we can put that out for bid, and, uh, that'll help the residents. And I had some ideas for the new owners, too, with regards to the, the basin in the middle of that pond as well, uh, making it safer. You know, when that development was built, it didn't have safety ledges or other, you know, safety measures, and when you have a body of water and people living around it can become dangerous. And so, um, so I think it's important to implement safety features for these, uh, these ponds and other things in order to, uh, you know, again, protect our residents.
Sure. So, could you also tell me, when we speak another pond, is it over, is it over capacity now?
Um, I wouldn't say it's, well, it, it, it does, uh, surcharge, but a lot of that water loops around, uh, tries to get around the Hickory Ridge-like property, which is where the dry basins would be. Um, I could share the whole design with you, but, uh, but certainly, um, the pond itself has, has some storage capacity itself. The pumping station hasn't worked, and, and again, that's kind of a private issue that we've taken over because we got easements now over there, and so, that's something that we kind of stepped, uh, stepped up and stepped into to help out the residents there, so.
Okay. Thank you for that information, Matt.
No problem.
So, Matt, I just have to briefly explain that the Class Seven designation, that's a, that's a testament to your, you and your department and what you're doing, and, uh, just like getting a fire code rating, which also affects your homeowner's, um, insurance, uh, this affects it, too. To be the, the best ranking in the state helps lower your costs for home insurance. And so, thank you for the hard work. It makes a difference.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Fire Territory Board. Pat, anything to report from them?
No, nothing at this time.
Department reports. Mrs. Shine.
Um, no report, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yeah, yeah, I briefly talked to Sheila today. I think I talked to you as well about the concerns of, uh, all of a sudden we're seeing all these smoke shops and things showing up, and I did ask her about the, the two liquor stores that were next to each other, and she told me that.
One liquor store, it's only one liquor store. The gentleman bought the, the building next door, he moved his liquor store next door, and he still owns the building on the other side, but it's just one liquor store. He only has one liquor license. That's on Fifty-Eighth and Broadway.
So, the signage is still up and everything, right?
Right. He's going to take that sign down and put his new sign up.
Mr. President, I, I would also like to say that, uh, I think I, I mentioned to you, I do not see smoke shops as economic development. It's, it's not. I mean, I don't, I don't know anybody that works there, uh, in, in any of these shops. Of course, you don't want to make, uh, tobacco products more easily, more easily accessible by your kids, for certain. So, um, I guess, uh, when we get a chance to talk to the attorney here.
I've already been contacted on it, I'm already researching into it now.
Yes.
We're looking at some type of ordinance change.
Okay. So, would any of that be, so what's there now? Would it be grandfathered, or, uh, can we do a?
Well, no, it, it's, if it's open, it's grandfathered. We, we talking about further approvals or developments.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And Mrs. Shine and I talked about this just last week. Uh, this is a hot topic. We have too many, we don't have enough exceptions for businesses. So, if somebody owns property and it's zoned a certain way, we have a long list of items that are automatically approved to go into that area. All they have to do is come to Sheila's office and get the building permit, or get a permit, and they're open for business. Doesn't come before the council, doesn't come before any committee. Um, other cities and towns do it a little differently, so we need to look at eliminating so many of the allowed uses in zoning, which ties in with the comp plan that we're doing, um, so that there's more exceptions that have to come before us to talk about it more.
Well, and the other problem we've got, Mr. President, is our, if I'm not mistaken, Sheila, uh, our commercial districts cascade into one another. So, you have the list of C-one, and then in C-two, any permitted use in C-one along with this. Then in C-three, C-three is the problem. The highway commercial is the problem. It has a hundred and thirty-five permitted uses.
That's a lot.
That's a lot. And a lot of them are probably outdated, Leonard. I mean, you don't, I don't know that we have video stores. Some of the things that we have listed in there are outdated when, when it was written. Um, as you alluded to, Mr. President, this is a, a big chunk of the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance revision on those permitted uses.
Yeah, because I, I think some business owners are, or some business people are taking advantage of that loophole that we, uh, we have in there.
It's not really a loophole, it's just outdated.
Yeah. Okay, no more questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King, Street Department.
Um, the only thing I'm going to have tonight is to talk about, um, last week, we, we met with, um, Milestone Contractors North out of Griffith. Um, the town owns, uh, property Eighty-Ninth and Randolph. We call it the pit. It's a clean fill disposal site for the town. We've had that site since nineteen eighty-four. Um, it's seventy-six acres. Um, we were approached by, by Milestone to, um, uh, for them to use this as a fill site. We've, we met last week with President Bella, our town attorney. Um, we decided we're going to, um, work on entering into a one-year lease agreement with Milestone, um, to let them use, um, this fill site. They will maintain the site, um, they'll maintain the roadway going back in there. Um, so it's really going to, it's really going to help us out and save us a lot of time and money, um, as, as, you know, as far as our operations are concerned. Um, you know, I don't, you know, I know the meeting's been held, it's, it's legal-wise, I don't know where we're at right now in that process, so we're just kind of.
Legal-wise, it's in Milestone's court.
It's, it's in their hands, yes. So, we're just waiting on, uh, Milestone to come up with an agreement we can sit back down and agree on, um, and, and move forward from there.
Uh, Steve, uh, and to Rick and Joe, did they mention how many trucks are coming into the facility?
They did not, they, they, they don't, it, it depends on the workload, Sean. They don't, I mean, you know, they might, you know, we might do this, and they might not have any work. So, it's project-specific.
Well, them, them being an asphalt company, I would hope that, that that road going in, because there's only one house on the road, Mrs. Sullivan, uh, I don't believe Mrs. Sullivan lives there anymore.
She does not.
Um, and I don't know who's got it, if it's gone over to the Parks Department.
It is.
Yep.
Um, so, no one's, no, there's no resident there, then truck traffic and dust, uh, on that road, uh, then wouldn't be a problem.
We talked about a traffic signal there, too.
Yeah, so those were, those were items that we discussed, um, as far as the dust control. We also talked about, you know, possibly paving the road, but there's only one resident back there. We, we don't want to, um, we don't want cars driving back there. It's gravel now, they're going to maintain it, they're going to treat it, uh, they're going to treat it for dust control, and it, it will be monitored.
Well, if this, the only other caution I would give, uh, give you guys, Steve, is maybe Milestone, Rick mentioned a, a possible light. I don't know that we would want to do that. I would prefer to see a gate, because if it gets out that you can get back there, there's a gate out there now past Sullivan's house, isn't there?
Yeah, there's, there's a gate out there, yeah. Yeah, if, if this agreement goes through, they'll be.
Yeah, okay, so we don't have anybody going back there dumping and contractors and other, you know?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. This would be, this would be, um, Milestone-exclusive.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. King?
That, that's all I have.
Very good.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
This is for Mr. King. Uh, can you give me a, Mr. King, a, a timetable as to when, uh, I think I seen that those, those speed humps?
Yeah, so the speed humps are in. We, we have the speed humps. We actually got a proposal, uh, this afternoon, came in for, uh, for installation of the humps, as well as, uh, striping and signage. Um, that was sent on to Pat this afternoon, um, and we'll discuss that probably tomorrow.
Right.
And, and once we get approval to move ahead, we're, we're ready to go. We, we have all the material, it's at our, it's at our shop, so we're ready.
Yeah, you know, and, and I appreciate, you know, your effort to try to help slowing down this crazy speeding that's going on everywhere in this town. Appreciate what the, uh, Police Department is trying to do. So, I guess we're just going to keep plugging it until we finally get something that'll really slow these people down.
I think it's going to be a variety of things to get control.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. King?
No.
Okay. Uh, Terrence, Parks Department?
Good evening, thank you. Um, we did take care of the lot that, that we spoke of, uh, on the last town hall meeting. Uh, we also was able to cut a second one that was over-located. We also was able to cut a second one that was over located by Stephick Park. In talking with residents over there, we are working on getting some additional signage over there for them to help curb all the after-hours activities there. Also wanted to take special attention to the Lake Erie Lacawanna, the tunnel. The tunnel was painted twice. And the reason why it was painted twice, because Donut reminded us that he was still there. So, every time we painted it, it got spray painted again. So, we're gonna continue to work on that. We also got a call about lighting in the tunnel, so we did some investigation there. It does have wiring, and it has room for seven light fixtures. So, we're gonna do some more research on that to see what it would cost, to make sure that we can have proper lighting there for people who use that trail for their bikes.
Thank you, Terrence. Chief Newses, Police Department?
Sure. So, almost every single one of these council meetings, people have had complaints about the speeding. That's something that has bothered me, because I, I was having a difficult time coming up with a solution. So, just to give you guys an idea of some numbers that we had for the month of May, we had five hundred and sixty-four traffic stops. Of those, three hundred and six tickets were issued. But to me, that seems like it's just not enough, because no matter what we do, it's, we can't stop these people from breaking the law and speeding. So, one of the things that we've implemented right now is we've implemented a traffic enforcement policy where we have an officer that's going to be only addressing speeding vehicles. He's got a list of twenty-five different problem areas, and each one of those areas, he's gonna be working daily, and he's gonna be making a minimal of five contacts per area and issuing citations as well. This is something that I hope to continue, and I hope that it grows. We'll see how it works out, but this is something that I really am taking initiative in to try and stop the speeding. It doesn't really sit well with me when people come to me and tell me that there's a problem, and I know there's a problem, and there's nothing I can do about it. So, I'm trying my best here, and I think that this is gonna curb some of it. Number two, Terrence kinda, kinda touched on it. There's been graffiti, so he came to me, and he's been talking to me, and we're trying to figure out some kind of a solution that we can get to try and take a preventative measure versus a reactive measure. And we're brainstorming different ideas, and that's gonna be coming in the weeks to come. Lastly, I wanted to mention that we are looking at putting on a women's self-defense night. This is gonna be probably within the next few months. I don't know how many people would be interested, but it was running through my mind, and then I got several text messages, emails from people that were kind of inquiring about it, so I said, "Let's do it." So, I'll have more to offer on that in the next council meeting, I hope. That's all I have.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Oh, yes, this is for Chief. Speaking of graffiti, of course, they're back, the graffiti is artists, I don't wanna call them artists, the graffiti vandals hit the old pancake house there. So, is that something that we reach out to the owner, or is that something that Code Enforcement does?
That is something that their owner is supposed to take care of. Once Code Enforcement sees it, they'll tag it, they'll notify the owner, and then the owner has a certain amount of time to take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Chief, back to the speeding and the new patrol program. Can we officially tonight, can you officially tell residents that they're on notice?
Absolutely.
That we're gonna have increased patrols, and we're gonna be ticketing speeders, right?
There's gonna be increased patrols. The one is gonna be a standard, it's always gonna be there, but we're also looking at doing other things with our motorcycles, with our ATVs, with our side-by-sides, stuff that's not, it's kind of inconspicuous, so people won't really see it. But we'll be there, and we'll stop those people that are doing forty and fifty in a twenty mile an hour zone, because I have a seven-year-old at home. I see it in front of my house all the time, and it's driving me crazy. So, we're, we're gonna do something. We're gonna, we're gonna do our best to fix this.
So, Leonard, you're on notice.
I know. I already got stopped one time.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Burton, anything to add?
No, sir.
Moving on tonight to general orders, we have no first reading or second reading ordinances. Moving on then to resolutions, we have Resolution Twenty-three dash sixteen. It's a resolution authorizing and approving acquisition of certain real estate to be utilized by the Maryville Fire Protection Territory in all matters related thereto. The property address is Twenty West Seventy-third Avenue, and I believe it's an old house that's actually directly behind the fire station on Seventy-third Avenue.
Yep.
Always correct.
Yep.
Anything to add?
Motion to approve.
Second. You have a motion by Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak, was it, or Mr. White?
I'll give it to him.
Chair will recognize Mrs. Yuzlak for a second on Resolution Twenty-three dash sixteen.
Sure, no problem.
Attorney Sefenoff, anything for us to know about this? I'm familiar with the House.
Familiar with the House, familiar, the attorney had contacted me from the Fire Territory. Any and all property that's acquired by the Fire Territory District has to be approved by the Maryville Town Council. This is not going to cost us anything, though. This is gonna be paid strictly with Fire Territory proceeds. So, at this time, I heavily recommend that we accept this resolution as tendered.
So, for the record, again, the address is Twenty West Seventy-third Avenue. The parcel number is forty-five dash twelve dash sixteen dash two seven eight dash zero zero six point zero 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 dash zero three zero. Do we have a purchase amount, Joe?
It's one hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Questions or comments on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm, I was just, I know they're acquiring the property, but what are they gonna do with it?
I think they're gonna use it for some training, as well as administrative offices as well, so, because I think they, they're outgrowing the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, this is a resolution, a voice vote is adequate. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution Twenty-three dash seventeen. It's a resolution of the town of Maryville, transferring monies within the twenty-twenty-three budget, moving from the general fund from town administration, the decrease is five hundred dollars. Moving into the general fund, legal notices, the increase is five hundred dollars, net effect is zero.
Still moved.
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak, to approve this transfer of funds. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk Trezor, I think this is to help you pay for legal notices that the clerk's office has to post by law?
Yes. We have to send out any time we do, any type of appropriations or anything for the council. We have to send out the legal notices, and we just didn't have enough in the budget to cover.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on this evening to the American Rescue Plan. Mr. Hardaway?
Thank you, Mr. President. The council favorable voucher for tonight for the American Rescue Plan is one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Make a motion to approve this voucher.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of the ARP voucher registry summary for this evening. The amount is one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents.
Did you say fifteen or sixteen?
Hundred and fifteen.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was talking to Trista earlier this evening about ARP fund, and I was asking her what in the world are we gonna do without this windfall of federal monies, because it's, we've certainly used it for a variety of things. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to BZA and large gathering actions. Mrs. Shine?
Yes, Mr. President. We have one petitioner, Elvira, would you take? Elvira Martinez is the petitioner, and Indiana Land Trust and Lake County Trust, number sixty-three twenty-nine, is the owners. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from Section Twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow a dental assistant program at an existing dental office located at fourteen fifty-two East Eighty-Fifth Avenue in a C3 highway commercial zoning district on point five-two acres. Evolution Training Academy is a program created to help bridge the gap between jobs and careers for those interested in the dental field. The course is a six-month-long course and has two hundred hours externship component, where students will get a cha, a change, to, a chance to experience firsthand how the dental office operates while practicing the skills that they are learning in class. Class sizes are small, no more than ten students to one instructor to give individualized attention. The program is accredited, accredited by the Indiana Office for Career and Technical School, and the radiology portion of the program has been approved as one of the few in Northwest Indiana area by the Indiana Department of Health. Upon completion of the program, students will receive a diploma and be eligible to take the radi, radiology exam. Evolution Training Academy is open on Wednesdays and Fridays from eight AM to three PM, and there is one instructor. And this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mr. White, for approval of this petitioner. I think this is your district, Mr. White?
Is it?
Or Mr. Pettit? I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is in Grand Park, west side of Mississippi, down past the Social Security Office.
So, tell us what your thoughts are for the business.
This is one of the things that, as an instructor for the last four years, and still in the field, this is something that is really necessary, it seems like, in this area. I currently have several doctors looking for assistance, and it seems like they're very shorthanded. Those that are radiology certified is even more difficult. And so, this is what we are hoping to do, is bring more individuals into the dental field, and starting with assistants. The doctor who's letting us use her office for this particular project is pretty inspirational, because she used to be a dental assistant. So, she's very passionate about it as well. So, it's, it can be a stepping stone, or it can be a career. So, this is what we're hoping to open everybody's eyes to.
So, Elvira, this is actually a, a, a good-paying job, right?
It is. I've made a career of twenty-one years.
Yeah, okay. Well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes. What is the charge for this training session?
The charge is eight thousand dollars. The tuition is eight thousand dollars. We are approved through the Department of Workforce Development as an in-training program, where they will pay qualified individuals up to five thousand, five hundred dollars. We also have a company called Clime that we offer financing through.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Anything else to add, Mrs. Shine?
No. She's all set to go.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay.
Before we move on, I want to remind the council, there is a map in your packets of the Maryville pit, and there's a red highlighted area that shows the designated area that Milestone would use. And what we also discussed in our meeting, Mr. Pettit, is that there is a ton of capacity in our pit.
Yes.
For hundreds of years.
Yes.
So, this, there's no concern about over-usage of the area and things like that. But we included the map, just to let you know, and I know, Leonard, you've been there in person and seen it.
Yep.
With me, so, take a look at that when you get a chance. Moving on to old business, any old business before us tonight? New business, any new business before us?
I got one thing, Mr. President.
Mr. Hardaway?
I should have did it under Councilman Pettit's Committee Elections and Publications, but it skipped me. On June the thirtieth, June twenty-ninth, tentatively, we will have a caucus to fill Councilman Span's position at five-thirty, hopefully at the Slobock Club. More information will be forthcoming, but right now, we're looking at June twenty-ninth at five-thirty at the Slobock Club.
So, Mr. Hardaway, explain to me what that means. What's a caucus that doesn't involve the town council in any ways? Could you kind of explain what it's about?
No. It only involves the four precinct committeemen, precinct one, twenty-two, twenty-five, and eighteen currently.
And they will select someone to serve the unexpired term of...
Right. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe other committeemen can attend the caucus, though.
Big pardon?
Am I correct? Other committeemen can.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, they can attend the caucus.
Yes, they can attend the caucus, but yeah, but there's only four people being able to vote.
Are they off-field, those precincts?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, yes. I know Michael Williams is in one.
Right.
I don't know who's in twenty-two, I think.
Jean Ward.
Jean Ward. Jean Ward's twenty-two.
Curtis Pearson's in eighteen, and I don't know who's in twenty-five.
I don't believe eighteen's in, in Ward one.
Eighteen is in Ward one.
I'm sorry.
Right.
Yeah.
Until end of the year.
Redistricting, probably.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Rich, what will be the, isn't there a seventy-two-hour deadline for candidates to file?
We're not gonna get into that aspect of it. Mr. Weiser will send out information to those committeemen.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Any other new business before us?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White?
I would just like to take the time during new business to recognize an individual in the audience that during the Hickory Ridge situation, she took her own money, and she delivered dinners up there, twenty-five dinners. They were actually great-looking dinners. She also bought socks out of her own pocket for someone, so I, Kamika, would you stand up, please?
All right.
Thank you, Kamika Parker. That's it, Mr. President.
We, we heard several times today, Mr. White, during the funeral, about leading with love. And we all need to do a lot more of that.
Absolutely.
And that was a big topic today.
Yep.
And I hope we all take heed to those words. Moving on tonight to public comment. If you have a public comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we allow three minutes for public comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert L. Buggs, Senior, and I live in Gary, Indiana. I came here tonight to reach out to each one of the councilperson to say heartfelt thank you for the way that you pay tribute and honor to my fellow warrior and veteran, Mr. Don Span. And I also want to come here to reach out to you in solidarity. I've been here a lot of times, and people thought that I came here as hate, but it was out of hurt of the thing that happened. I won't go into details, but I do want to publicly apologize to anybody up here that I may have offended during my hurt. I would like to come to you in solidarity. And as a matter of solidarity, what I mean by that is, when we stand and give allegiance to that flag, which means a lot to me, when it says, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all," I just wanted to mean that, not be a ritual, but to actually mean liberty and justice for all. So in solidarity, I come to you, and I apologize to all of y'all, but, uh, I didn't know about this, this Lake Ridge apartment, so I would hope that the, this body, the town council, will write a letter in solidarity and support of the things that they are suffering. Now, I just found out tonight, they got ten days to move. Ten days, they'll be homeless, but they took the rent on the first, and they kept it. That's wrong. These people will be homeless. So I would hope that the Maryville Town Council will write a letter in solidarity with Robert Bugs to support these citizens, and thank you very much.
Happy to. Thank you.
Like you.
So that was a public comment with love. Thank you, Mr. Bugs.
Good evening. My name is Darian Collins. I live at twenty-five oh five West Sixty-Fifth Avenue. I just want to say a couple of things. The FEMA, uh, application, if you, if your home was damaged by FEMA, or by the hurricane on March thirty-first, thirty-first, and you want to get FEMA assistance, that deadline for Maryville is Friday, June sixteenth. So I'm one of the people that's got to skedaddle and get in there and make my application by Friday, June sixteenth. So I just wanted to say that. But I did want to comment on the Hickory Ridge situation. My grandson, whoever anybody that knows me knows that he is my left heartbeat. Uh, he and his mother lived in Hickory Ridge for five years. Uh, her ceiling started cracking last July, and the owners were working on getting the ceiling fixed. On Christmas morning, about three o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, something like that, the whole ceiling fell in in the entryway in the apartment. And so she called us in a panic. Uh, my grandson lived with me for a week and a half, and she was there trying to squeegee up water. She called them and asked for assistance. They provided her no assistance to clean the apartment. She has a very detailed written and email record of her communication, which I commend her on. So when she went to them and asked to be moved to a different apartment, they gave her an eviction notice because she would not sign a new lease. So on Christmas, uh, on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, when most people were probably out having a good time, we were in that nasty complex, getting her apartment cleaned up and getting her moved out. We got everything out of there. We got the apartment very clean. I did a lot of the cleaning, and I could see the mold in her kitchen, in her bathroom, and in my grandson's bedroom. And I always wondered, when he would be spending the night, he breathed so heavy, like he had, um, um, what is it, um, as, no, what is it when people have, um, um?
COPD?
Um, no, what is it when you do the sleep study?
Sleep apnea.
Right, sleep apnea. He, I mean, he's four years old, breathing like he has sleep apnea. And I kept saying to her, "It's mold in there, it's mold in there." She kept saying, "Oh, no, it's not." And when I was cleaning, they just paint the radiator over the mold. The walls had mold. It was horrible. So I, I told her, I said, "This may seem bad, but this is a blessing that you are out of there." My grandson breathes normal now. He sleeps normal. He's happy, but that place has been a problem for a long time. Now, this is my issue, that, uh, the Ross Township office was able to help her, but they could not help her move. She can't, you know, she came up with her first month's rent and her deposit, because it was tax time, she came up with that, stayed with her grandpa, or other grandmother till she did. Then, when she got moved, uh, Ross Township was able to help with rent payments or whatever they've done. I don't know what they've done, but it's been five and a half months, and they haven't sent her deposit back yet, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. So we are waiting on her deposit, and now it's new owners and all this other stuff. Where is her money? And so the same thing is gonna happen to these people. If they've paid rent, they are not gonna get their money back. And so we have a big problem here, so I don't know, I don't know if you can do an emergency for the ARP money, I don't know if there's grants that the town can apply for, uh, and on an emergency basis to help these people, but there's something, I know, I was hearing something about some additional emergency monies for the state for, um, COVID or ARP or whatever it is, but a state that has a three-billion-dollar surplus, and now we got people that need help, we have got to find some money to help these people. So I'm just saying that, you know, thank God, my, my grandson and his mom are out of there, but she wants her eighty, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars back. So if there's a list, a petition, a lawsuit, whatever it is, uh, she wants to be, she wants to be on it. So my hearts go out to you. I, I pray, you know, I pray the best for you. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Nancy Freyce, and I live at Hickory Ridge Apartments currently, and I was one of the ones to have the ten-day notice on my door, and, uh, the building next to me, they had to move out the very next day. That morning, uh, well, I'll put it this way, they went to bed that night, that morning, they had to get up and their whole world turned upside down. Same thing with me. Everybody don't have money to pay for, uh, uh, U-Haul, storage, movers, rent deposit, security for new places when we just paid our rent. So I piggyback what she said, we need help. Thank you.
Brian Massarch, two oh one East Sixty-Eighth Place. Um, I'd like to remind council that, uh, thirteen West Thirty-third Avenue, the Public Works Building is not in a TIF zone, and spending money, TIF money outside of a TIF zone is not consistent with state statute. If you need the state statute so that you can understand that, I'd be more than happy to share that with you. I don't want to see our town breaking any laws. Um, as far as Hickory Ridge goes, this ties into a, a theme that I have been trying to, um, hammer away at, its communication. Where were town council when people had to be basically removed from there? No, one town council person was over there representing, and that wasn't even the, the, the representative for that ward.
I was there too, Brian. Thank you.
Who count? Did you, did you issue the press statement? Did you, did you talk to the press?
Yeah, we sure did. We sure did.
Did you, President Bella?
We issued a state, a statement from the town.
Who is in the communication, who is over there from the town helping these residents? There's posts almost every day on Facebook, "We don't know what's going on, we got these stickers, no, we got different stickers, we gotta move, we gotta move today, we got ten days." Someone should be helping these people. Someone should be over there stationed with a tent, "Come on in here, we'll help you." We should have volunteer programs where residents... I have a pickup truck. If, if, if my neighbors need me to help you move, I, I got a pickup truck, I help. We, we should be doing things like this, that's leading with love. That's the, let's get somebody down here. It shouldn't just be the Ross Township, uh, representative down there. We should be doing things and thinking outside of the box, asking for volunteers, because it's our neighborhood. It's shocking to see, uh, on the news channels, "Oh, this apartment complex is basically, uh, going to hell because of blah, blah, blah." It's, that's Maryville. Maryville, that, that doesn't do, uh, that's not beautification, that's not... Whew, so frustrating. I love this town, and to see that in that black eye, it just hurts. As far as graffiti goes, maybe we should go the opposite way. Instead of trying to figure out how to punish people and how to remove, maybe we should encourage these young little artists, these street artists, "Hey, come and paint here. Don't do it on all of our other buildings, we got a tunnel here. Come, come make it beautiful. Let, let's create some rules, create some rules and whatnot, and then let's, let..." There's a lot of places in cities throughout America where they actually encourage graffiti artists to come and, you know, make, put up a mural or something. Why not there? And we can show off youth talent. That's just a suggestion. Thank you, everyone.
Hello, my name is Sharietta Strong. My voice is gone, sorry, I've been crying and going through this. I'm a Hickory Ridge, um, former, well, not former anymore, um, I was put out the first day, um, when it occurred, um, from the mold and everything else, um, so it's, 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 it's going, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard. I, I don't even know where to start, where to end it with the situation, it's really heartbreaking. I have a two-year-old daughter, and an eleven-year-old, and it just hurts. I gotta go and take them to friends or family or whatever, and, and take showers at a, at a truck stop, and in the shelter, at the Red Cross. They put us out the second day of, of being there. It's hard, you know, it's hard. I'm a working mother, single mother, and it's hard, so, thank you.
Hello, my name is Tracy. I actually live in Hickory Ridge as well. I've been out there ten years, going on eleven years, and the communication is horrible. It's no reason that us that live out there have to come home and not, and worry if we're gonna have a place to live, worry if our kids gonna be able to get in the house when they come home from school, and then, not only that, our children pretty much was raised here. So now, if we get put out, which, that's what the notice says, it says ten-day notice, meaning that we gotta be gone by next week. Some people don't have jobs, some people, um, you know, their financials is not as strong as other people. Some people don't have, um, support from family, friends, or anything like that, and it's just nerve-wracking, and it's very stressful. And looking at this young lady right here, I feel sorry for, for her. You know, I live out there, but I have a support system, but I wish it was things that I can do to help, you know, um, help her and help other families out there because it's bad. You know, the communication, I had to call, when I came home from, today from, from work at two-thirty, I had to call three or four different people just to find out what was going on in my complex where I pay my bills every month on time, and nobody seems to know anything that's going on. I heard the, um, the young, the gentleman right here earlier state that you guys gonna have a meeting. Okay, that's the problem, y'all having all these private meetings, but nobody is telling us nothing. Nobody seems to know anything. We call, we ask questions, we're polite, now if we call and hoop and holler, raise our voice, be disrespectful, then we get hung up on. But when we call with legitimate questions, we get no answers. Nobody knows anything. We go around to the office, doors are locked, everybody's gone. We see one person, we ask them a question, "Oh, I don't know." All we know is the health department was out here, the fire department put, uh, tags up, and that's it. It's not fair, and I'm, all I'm asking is that, for somebody, please, before the end of the week, tomorrow, tell us something. I asked this the very first day this happened to them, because I was concerned, because I'm like, okay, I don't want to come home and there's a notice on my door. Lord behold, what happens today? It was a notice on my building, and nobody seems to know where the notice came from. Next thing you know, it's taken down, and then they tell us, I called the health department, the lady told me, "We'll call back in the morning at ten-thirty, between ten-thirty and eleven." I called the fire inspector, he told me, he helped whoever he, uh, Pullins, uh, how you say his last name? I talked to him, he gave me, he was very helpful, I will give him that much, but other than that, we know nothing, nothing at all. Besides, if we don't pay our rent, we get evicted. We don't pay our rent on time, we got a hundred-dollar late fee. But they quick to give us that, but not quick to give us airsoft on whether or not we're gonna have a roof of our heads, our kids gonna have a place to stay. So if you guys can help us with that, I, I'm sure everybody out here would be appreciative of it, and not just let us leave out this door and have no answers.
Mr. President? No.
I just want to second everything that, um, everybody's been saying. I stay at fifty-six sixty Hay Street. I found out I was being put out at work. I work for an attorney, um, he's a divorce attorney, but people was calling around looking for tenant landlord rights, and I just so happened to ask the young lady, was she talking about Hickory Ridge Apartments? And she said, "Yeah, I had to leave my job without notice, without knowing if I could come back to work the next day to see about a situation. I was literally being put out. I have a five-year-old, a soon-to-be two-year-old, and an eight-month-old. I was, I was only able to grab formula and diapers. I have so much stuff in my apartment, the, um, main door is not secured, it's being exposed, people apartments is being exposed and possibly being broken into while going through this traumatic experience right now. I'm a two-time traumatized, um, person. I, I lived in East Chicago, but that's a different story. My middle child died three times due to mold. I had to bring him back to life three times due to mold. I moved from East Chicago to Maryville Hickory Ridge Apartments, and it's been traumatized again within a two-year's time span. I had to get my children up out of there. I didn't want to be out of there like that. I was one of the people that was trying to, hey, do y'all see this building? I literally called code enforcement the day before this happened, that Tuesday, and spoke with somebody, I don't know, spoke with somebody, um, in the code enforcement, they were so insensitive after this to happen the very next day. The ve, I, I have her name, I just don't... I, I, I called and expressed like how I'm expressing to y'all, I might sound, you know, a little upset, but y'all got a home to go to at night. I gotta call people, "Hey, can I stay here this night? Can y'all keep this kid? My family is separated." Something has to be done about this, like, today, like, yesterday. And we do call, somebody mentioned calling the trustees' office, I called the trustees' office, they're telling us to call Red Cross. Red Cross ain't got no answer for us, they telling us to call the town of Maryville. We called the town of Maryville, everybody, they want to take our name down, they not giving us no answers. We about to lose jobs because we steady checking on things, calling attorneys. I'm at work not focused. My mental is messed up. I can't even concentrate. I got sent home yesterday and today and told me to take care of this, but taking care of this, I'm not making no money. Uh, it, nothing is, it's, it's a domino effect, but it's going the wrong way, it's not, it's not positive direction at all, it's very negative. You, it's, it's, it's a lose-lose situation, because now I'm probably in the process about to lose my job. It's only so many days I can sit here and take care of this, but this is something that needs to be top priority and focused. Top priority, I'm homeless with three kids, three small kids at that, and I also want to second, my kids is on nebulizers too. All three of my children are. Uh, and, and I lived in Hickory Ridge two times. My oldest is five and got diagnosed while living in those apartments. Yes, the seventeen oh seven building, the building that's right across from the leasing office. Yeah, yeah, so, yes, I, 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 I want to, I want answers, and we want answers soon, soon. Everything, people, people probably losing their cars or whatever, whatever they pay for, you know, people can't supply diapers or supply whatever for their kids because we're dealing with this, and all we're getting told is, "Call this person, call that person." We are the people to call. We are the people to call, yeah. And, and now we're getting a notice talking about some ten days. Movers cost three hundred-plus dollars. Don't nobody got that, especially if you missing work? These apartments, and, and, and that's another thing, these apartments, everybody went up on their rent, but nothing is new in the apartment. They want thirteen hundred dollars for these, they want thirteen hundred dollars for these basic apartments, that's nowhere, it's gonna be another issue, like Hickory Ridge, let's just say it like that. They go up, um, on the cost of living, but they're not going up on the cost of conditions, they're not keeping up with the conditions of the place, but they going up with the money for the place. That's another thing. They want, yeah, yeah, they want three times the rent and all of that, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, but then you go in and analyze the place, you wondering if you finna run into a, another situation, that's... And so, right now, you telling me I don't have time to be picky, I got ten days, so now I'm finna have to force and hurry up to move my family into something that I can't really properly analyze before I decide if I want to give them twenty-six hundred dollars for a security deposit and a first-month rent, and I could possibly be running into the same problem. Yeah, so, that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Sabina Miller, thirty-one twenty West Seventy-Fifth Place. The first thing I want to do is also tie into the Hickory Ridge. So when we're listening to what the town spends money on, I just heard sixty-two thousand dollars for signage to rename the department. We knew the renaming was coming, not totally sure why it's so important, but it, we knew it was coming. So half of that, I just heard, is coming from the ARP funds. We have a bunch of people in here and a whole lot more outside that probably could really use those ARP funds to somehow make ends meet right now while they're being put out, while they've already been put out. The ARP funds, if I understand it well, were coming in here for rental assistance, COVID-related things. This is the closest that I can see, and I know the state of Indiana still provides rental assistance, because I happen to be a property manager, and some of our tenants actually are still getting rental assistance. Why can we not provide rental assistance to the people who are really badly affected right there in this? The other part, the other part is, um, the insurance of the current owner, and I realize it's supposed to change hands, but the insurance of the current owner is supposed to be covering these situations. Now, while the insurance companies will probably drag their feet for a while, why can the town not take funds out of ARP and put it out there until the insurance company comes through with things, just to bridge people? I think that's what these funds are intended for, and that's where they're best used in an emergency situation, so, um, but besides that, I had a few more things. I didn't find the package posted tonight, so I had no idea really what was gonna be on the agenda. That's the first thing since we agreed the packages would be out there, and I would appreciate if that still goes out so that I can read up on some of the items on the agenda. The other thing I'm wondering about is, so, I went to the election board, and the election board told me that they had nothing to do with the redesign of this, but that it's the town of Maryville that redesigned the wards, and by sheer accident, did somebody share with me... And by sheer accident, did somebody share with me the new ward map, which shows, for example, I'm on the ballot, as you guys know, for Ward Four, which shows that Ward Four was changed. And my precinct was actually split in half. I guess I'm lucky I'm still in my Ward Four and not in a different ward. But I wasn't notified of any of the changes. How can that be when I have all the walking lists, et cetera, that people on the ballot are not notified at absolute minimum? Were the residents notified? They're not in their own ward anymore that they think they're actually in, that they're voting in? And I found this out after the primary. So it was, like I said, by sheer accident. So I'm planning to put an official complaint in about this because this is not appropriate, that we're not being notified. I believe you, Mr. White, were in the same boat.
Absolutely.
So I know we were, you know, there were multiples of us affected by this. Then the next part I wanted to know is Milestone and the acreage where they're using it as a fill site. Do we know what they'll actually be allowed to dump? Is there a list of items that they can dump versus other items that they cannot dump? Do we know that?
It's construction debris.
Construction debris.
Concrete.
It's going to delineate it in the agreement.
Okay, good, thank you. That was one of my questions.
In no hazardous ways.
No. Or household blah blah, whatever. Yes, that's what I'm concerned about. Another item I wanted to raise is, thank you so much for taking some action on that speeding. I'm still getting passed on double-yellow lines, straights, almost every day, which is so inappropriate. Oh, and going back to the ARP funds, I guess it would be really nice if we were to know, like, what is the fund, the balance in those funds right now, Mr. Hardaway?
Trista?
Sorry? Oh.
The balance, Trista, in the ARP fund.
I probably have that in my. The town received approximately $7.8 million from the federal government. It is to be spent over a period of six years, planned over a period of four. And the balance, I sent President Bella the other day, was approximately $3.1 million left, I believe.
That's correct.
Is that right? When I say the balance is left, there are some of those funds that are planned already for different projects. Stormwater, for example, still has a large portion of improvements to do. So part of that 3.1 is planned and allotted, but not the entirety because there are still some years left on the spending. And council wanted to make sure, the committee wanted to make sure that for future emergencies, that there were still funds available as times develop.
So they'll run out 2025?
By 2026, it needs to be spent, but by 2024, it needs to be planned. By the end of those years.
Okay, so that should be, I mean, to hopefully help these individuals. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Shonda Flowers, 6137 Connecticut Street, Maryville, Indiana. First, let me just say this. Dr. Smith, I commend you on your report. I thank you for recognizing that you are a servant of those constituents that put you in that office because that's not often the tone. One of the things I do want to leave love, and that is, Kamika, job well done with regards to the dinners, but I would like to help too. I want to know if there's something that we can do as leaders. I know some of you all don't see me as a department leader, but I am. And with that being said, I challenge that we all collectively, not just leave it to the council, but to the department heads in trying to help with our citizens that live here. These are our neighbors. And there is an urgent situation. I am what new version of homelessness looks like. I can say that as a person who's been working for the town for 14 years, but I'm also a person who, just in the past two years, had seven surgeries. And when you think of the medical finances that I am in and my husband are in, this is what new homelessness looks like. And so when you say to me that I have to get out of my home within 10 days, I'm gonna tell you, I don't know how the hell that happened. I am grateful that I have a support system, but my heart goes out and it really went out to you guys because I started in Hickory Ridge when I moved here into this town of Maryville, and I loved it. We had great memories there, and it really was disheartening. That place did not get there overnight. That was months and months. And so it's amazing to me is that, and years, and the parts that we couldn't see. But when you drive past here, I know myself, and I sat down complaining myself with just seeing what the garbage looked like. Those are not mice that I'm sure that are trotting through that apartment complex. Those are rats. And it is sad when you see kids outside playing and you can barely see the heads of the kids because the grass is so high. That did not happen overnight. And so we collectively, you know, when you talk, Dr. Lackey is a colleague of mine. I've worked with Dr. Lackey, and I'm grateful that I know him. I know what his training consists of. But the training defeats the purpose if you're not willing to put the action in place. When you talk about being leaders, it's the head and the tail follows. If the head's not where it needs to be, then you can't expect for the employees or any other of the residents to follow. Dr. Smith, when you came up here and you spoke, you spoke of a vision that we don't have, that's not a reality. And I'm not being facetious when I say that. I don't care if you like me. But I am the director over the courts. The title itself, whether you like me or not, deserves respect, just like the respect of you all holding positions as council people. No matter what, I've always addressed you as council persons. I walk down this hall, I speak to everyone knowing that you have nothing good to say about me, and I'm okay with that. But it sets a tone when it comes to you spending possibly $7,500 for training that you're not willing to follow yourselves. I challenge you guys to sit down with all of us. I'm willing to make phone calls to apartment complexes to see if people are willing to waive the move-in fee. I am willing to call any different entities that I possibly can. But I also have to challenge and let you guys know as citizens that it is important that in order to receive help from our township or from Maryville, you have to be resident, you have to be registered as a resident in this town. It's difficult if you're not registered to be able to turn in the paperwork that you need because they're only going to help the people who reside and are registered in this town. So you got to make sure that you do your part as well. I'm willing to make calls. I'm willing to sit down and do whatever I need to do. I'm willing to put on some gloves, put some gym shoes on, some Tims, and go do some work, whatever these people need. I am here. I have a minivan. That minivan can transform into a F-150. Whatever you need as my neighbor, I am more than willing to help. I cook a hell of a meal, if it means to bring a meals, but I would love for the community center, the community center, to wrap its arms around the community and not limit the hours that they need. I am willing to pull an overnight torrent and work at the community center if it's past 11 o'clock. Whatever, as a department leader, but more important, as a citizen, as a neighbor, I am willing to do. If we can pull some type of emergency meeting to figure out what we need to do collectively to help these people, I am all in. I wish you all the luck. I am here. I work for the Maryville Town Court. You can call the office, and I'm not about talking, I'm about action. So call me.
I was just up here, so Darian Collins, and I was just thinking about the bureaucracy of money and approval of money and securing of funding. And 10 days is very short. But I would challenge us not to spend, I think it was $40,000 on fireworks for the Fourth of July. That's going to burn up in the air when we have people in need. So I would challenge us to maybe cut that in half. Or I would challenge us to go to our business community and ask for money. We ask for money for everything else. We ask for money for the Juneteenth events. We've asked for money for that lukewarm Cocoa Puff Black History Month program that I attended. We can ask our business community for money. I have been to, I don't know how many fundraisers over the years for this person with lupus, this person with heart disease, this person that got burned out, this person that, you know, kid got hurt in a motorcycle accident. I mean, I can name hundreds of things. We, as a business community, we as a community, all of these businesses, we can ask for some help for our people. These women look like me. I'm a single mother, just like they were. And they're black women. And we can make a hell of a statement to the world that we care about everybody in this town, regardless to what you look like. So we have a lot of money here, and we can ask, and we need to do that. Thank you.
Good evening, Ron Denneal, Maryville, Indiana. I just wanted to add, because I don't want to just keep letting it go on and on and on, but just to add on, like she spoke of helping out with deposits and different things. When they actually move, they will have to resecure NIFCO and water and everything all over again. And I know the town of Maryville has used NIFCO and reached out to them to support them in fundraisers like they just did for the June 15th and for the Black History, where NIFCO gave them money. So this is where we can go back to them and say, hey, we have this group of people who, they have to get utilities transferred over. Can you waive deposits? Can you waive fees? Because everything is going to add up eventually just to compound more money that they need. And then for you, Mr. Hardaway, you spoke of, I wrote it down, but I can't remember because I hadn't heard of it. I was like, okay, what is that? You spoke of a grant that was available to the citizens of Maryville. I think it was for homeowners, though. It was a grant during the storm, if they needed some repairs done to the exterior portions of their house?
ARP.
Oh, is that the ARP? Okay. ARP is mighty, wow, okay. So those are funds that, if they aren't used, can those funds be helped to get these residents' deposits to go for new dwelling places for them? I know you said that those funds were available. I don't know if people use them or not. I guess we're not privileged to that information, which is fine. But that's another area of opportunity where we can probably seek out funds to also help. We do have a family nonprofit, and we are re-putting, trying to put some things together to help our citizens also. So, you know, for people who are looking to do things and reaching out. So definitely we'll try to support you guys as much as we possibly can.
Hello, Eric January. We live at 3031 West 58th Avenue. I live, I've been living in Maryville for eight years. Been concerned about the area since I've been here because if I move to an area, I believe that I should be proud of the area. And when I heard about what was going on at Hickory Ridge, I complained about it a year ago. The town manager is aware of it. And that was one of the things that motivated me to run for the town treasurer because I am just deeply concerned about the direction of the town. And I don't want to belittle anyone, but one of the things that I do want to say as a business owner and as a person that grew up in apartments, my mother was a single parent with two children. And so I'm just going to say that I'm going to propose, hopefully, I'm going to give $2,500 to the town. I believe that citizens, although the government does have money, I know that we give to charitable organizations, and people actually need money right now. So I will deliver a check for $2,500 tomorrow to Kelly, to, for the Hickory Ridge people. And they can use it however they want for moving or whatever the case is. So I'll do that, and I'm hoping that other people within the town would do the same thing. Because if you were in that same situation, you would want somebody to help you. So that's the only thing I have to say.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Jackson, 3110 West 77th Avenue, Maryville, Indiana. I am the president for Maryville Pop Warner. We are the largest youth organization in the town of Maryville. It bothers me because a lot of our youth that play on our football team are in that apartment complex. So again, with Ms. Shonda Flowers and Eric January, Maryville Pop Warner is going to also donate money. And then we're going to waive our registration fee for any of those kids that still want to play football. It is my prayer and my hope that tonight, the town will follow suit in helping with that. A big part of our community is our youth. And if we care about our youth, then we have to care about their parents.
Sorry, I got one more thing to say because he made a lot of sense when he said our youth in Maryville. Now, my question is, if we, the people that's being put out of Hickory have to move to a different city, that's going to take our kids away from what? Maryville school system? Maryville activities, athletics department? So what do we do then? Because those funds that they're donating is supposed to go to those kids, correct? They're not going to go to those kids that they're living in East Chicago, Gary, because if you're not a Maryville resident, you can't participate in those activities.
Again, I'm not taking a shot at nobody, but I've lived here for 28 years, right? Let me make a correction to you. If your kid want to participate in Maryville Pop Warner, your kid does not have to live in the town of Maryville to participate in Maryville Pop Warner. In fact, the town does not support Maryville Pop Warner in the sense of that. The sports that happen in the town of Maryville are all done by outside sources, okay? So that's not ran through the Parks Department or through the town of Maryville. So if your kid want to participate, we'll take a list of those kids' names, and they can still participate in Maryville Pop Warner, and will be treated the same.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Jackson, Ramin Jackson. I live here in Maryville and 1300 West 90th Place. Just a couple of things. I wanted to know, who is the councilperson in this, that's in this area?
That's deceased.
Oh, deceased, okay. I just want to make sure who was the councilperson on that. The second thing I was going to say.
It's not me, it's still Donald Spann. Hickory Ridge is Donald, was Donald Spann. That's Ward One. That was Ward One until the end of the year.
You changed the wards in 2023. It's Ward Two that's your responsibility.
I beg to differ.
Well, let me continue. Let me.
It's Ward One, sir.
Okay, let me continue. So the point I'm trying to make is, who's going to be the lead person to? You're going to be the lead person?
Absolutely.
On that? Okay, so my next question then is, will there be an emergency meeting tomorrow?
No.
When will be the emergency meeting?
I have to find out availability of what Mr. Terrence has at the community center. Because I can say, I like to have a meeting tonight, but if it's all booked, if it's all booked up, you can't put people in there. So I want to give him an opportunity tonight to tell me what's available, and then we'll reach back out. I'll give myself a number, 219.
Okay, what I want to propose is.
8968.
What I want to propose is, I want to be a part of that.
You can call me.
I want to, I mentioned that because I want to be a part of that group, okay? To help with that. Okay?
Take care of it right away.
Right away, okay. The other thing is, I'm going to be committed to securing $10,000 of funds to support these folks, right? So after this is over, after this meeting is done, I want to make sure I connect with you all.
In my opening statements, I indicated I was concerned about this area. And I want to just let Mr. White know that I'm willing to work with you. I'm known as official beggar. I can't guarantee you the kind of money Reverend Jackson, my friend, offered you. But I will do my best, and I'm willing to work with you, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I just want to say something real quickly, Mr. President. I-
I, I'm glad to work with a person that had a huge impact on my life. I'm not going to tell you what year he was my teacher, but, but I want to be around him anytime I can. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll tell you, 21, I was ten.
Just as a correction, I'm looking at the map, and the map is definitely your ward.
It doesn't, it doesn't, that's the redistricting map, guys. It doesn't take effect till next year.
Right. So, but Kelly, next year, we just voted on that.
It's the redistricting map that goes into effect next January.
Right, the current right now.
No, that's not the current.
Not to belabor the point. Kelly, I'll deliver the check tomorrow. Let's make sure the people get some money. And the most important thing is let's spread the word. The doc, I'm giving $2,500. The other person's dedicated the $10,000. Let's make this happen for the people of Hickory Ridge. That is embarrassing. Let's let them, let's let the community see what Maryville actually represents. It's the community, and we care about one another, all right?
I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Second.
Very good. You adjourned. Thank you all.